Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Douglas Planning Board Meeting for January 28th, 2020. The meeting is being recorded and will be available for viewing on the Douglas Public Access Channel and on the Douglas website. We'll come to order at 7:01. And the first item on the agenda is A and R Plan Hayward Homes, 27 Webster Street, possible vote.
I have some revised miniature plans here.
Can you just give your name for the record Byron?
My name is Byron Andrews. I'm a professional surveyor with the survey of engineering. I'm representing Hayward Homes this evening. I'm sure you all recall. We have two lots here. The outline in green is the perimeter of both lots. The yellow line is the current lot line between them from a plan from earlier this year. There's sufficient area in frontage in order to divide it into three lots, which is what we're seeking to do here. All three lots have conforming frontage and area. The issue that came up at the last meeting was the site distance, which is limited compared to the speed limit in the area.
What is that again? Forty-five?
The speed limit is forty-five.
What's the distance required by three something?
Three hundred and sixty feet. So there's a suggested speed limit of thirty-five in that area, but obviously the posted speed is forty-five. So when our survey crews went out and looked at the site distance, they were, to their credit, conservative in how they measured it. I had gone out there afterwards, prior to last week's, prior to the other week's meeting, and I found the site distance was substantially more. However, I didn't want to change what was on the plan because I didn't want you to have to take my word for it and say, "Really guys, the site distance is different than on our last plan." So I asked Bill to come with us and to look at it together so that we could see it as well. So the two lots in question where the site distance would be an issue are these two here. We're proposing the driveways come out here between the end of the guardrail and the beginning of a embankment. The embankment isn't very tall. It's four or five feet tall, but obviously if you're in a car, that can be a restriction. So what we measured for a site distance, the shortest site distance, which is for this lot, is about, is three hundred feet up this way. The site distance for the easternmost lot is actually three hundred and fifty feet. So that's close to what the requirement is, and it's substantially in excess of what the previous plan had shown.
So one of the questions came up was, how come, I think the first A and R was for two lots and then this one's for three. How come you didn't propose three lots?
At the time, our client at the time, which had, you know, one, two, three lots in the remaining land, she only wanted to create two lots and a parcel. However, when Dale was looking at the land, he realized that there was a potential there for three lots rather than two.
Do you show, I can't make enough here. Do you show the site distance somewhere?
Yeah, the site distance, I just kind of scribbled it on this one because I didn't want to make another print. But I changed it on the mile hour course. So the site distance here for this driveway is three hundred feet and five hundred and twenty-five feet the other way. The site distance for this, for this lot, lot one, three hundred and fifty feet in this direction and, I believe, five hundred feet.
You're saying three hundred for the other one is your minimum that you can provide?
That's right.
Wow, that jumped. It was like two something or whatever.
Yeah, that's why I didn't want to put it on the plan until...
So the percent difference is like twelve, twelve percent or something like that, thirteen off the requirement?
Yeah.
I'm just doing it by head.
Yeah.
What changed to make this site distance significantly greater?
It was actually just a matter of me measuring it. I know the requirements for what you need for site distance. Our crews, our field crews, they tend to be a little conservative. You know, they want to make sure that they're not showing anything in excess of what it is. So when they had measured it, they had measured a site distance that was actually quite a bit less than what I measured when I was out there. I used the standard method of coming back fifteen feet from the edge of pavement with, you have to be able to see something three and a half feet tall, which is the way you would be sitting in a car. So what I did is I took a survey rod. I put some tape around it at that height, at that distance from the road, and went up the road until we lost sight of it, measured back. And the distance I measured was, is along the edge of the road. So actually, when you're, if you're measuring it at an angle from where you would be in the driveway, it would be a little bit more than that. But it was just a matter that our survey crew was more conservative than they needed to be when they measured.
But you as a PLS is validating the three hundred feet. Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
I don't mean like we're in court or anything, but he's the man. This is his jurisdiction. Completely control of the site.
Can you agree with that, Phil?
Yeah, I appreciate Byron asking me to come out, you know. It would have been concerning if they just changed it.
Right.
But, no, I verified they did it accurately.
So any other comments or feel on it?
No, I just want to make sure you all know, we did send out an email from town council. So it's not in your packet, but maybe it is. I don't know.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. So you have that.
I can't cast a stone. You know what I mean? Because I had a A and R here. It was off like ten percent or something. So I can't, for twelve, thirteen percent, I can't be disingenuous and...
Boy, any other questions, comments?
Make a motion to endorse the A and R plan for Hayward Homes and all C, 27 Webster Street?
That's interesting.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Yep.
Made by Mike G, seconded by Mike G. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, obtained, motion carries. Let the record show that Tracy's absent. Okay Byron, thank you. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Good luck.
Discussion.
If you want to move the solar discussion up, I know there's some people here interested in that.
We can go to the solar, then the core. Do the homework.
Yep. So I did forward Webster's solar bylaw.
Oh, you got a mile lot tonight?
Yep.
To town council. And town council said in a very short email, yes, it's legal. So there you go.
Some legal opinion?
There you have it.
So is that, yes, it's legal, meaning like it passed town, town review?
Yeah, probably.
And town vote?
I went and did a little research.
Yep.
On the, basically on what the square footage of panels is for one kilowatt and up from there and, you know, when you have single phase in the street, you're limited to ten anyway. It's a national grid thing. So you can't have over ten kilowatts on a property that's limited to the single phase. Now, three phase, that's a different, you can negotiate with the national grid what those lines can carry. But I have a problem. I think we should parallel with our other electric producing bylaw, which is the wind solar, the wind power. Is that what you're saying? Wind power?
Wind power.
And that's limited for a small scale. I think we should limit our scale to thirty kilowatts. Because first of all, the farm, I have ten kilowatts for a farm, and frankly, that's what I'm limited to. But for a general house, you could do ten, twelve, fifteen. For the accessory use, which is the small, you're not a business. You're not a solar business. I think we should limit it to thirty. It's small, and everything above that would be considered large. Just a numbers thing, because two hundred and fifty takes up three quarters of an acre to two hundred and fifty kilowatts.
What's the...
There it goes. Well, but I don't care about tomorrow. It's what today we're looking at. I'm in favor of a bylaw. I just want to...
What's some of the private ones, I guess? I think, I'd be curious about some of the private ones that people have, what their current size is so they...
Anywhere from eight to fifteen if they can, or twenty. They're not going to spend, they're not going to...
You mean the permitted ones through the town?
He's talking for residential.
The residential private ones.
Oh, like roof mounted?
No, 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 no. I'm talking about the arrays that sit in the back, you know, like this one on South Street.
Well, there's one on Southwest Main. We're crossing the old, it's where the woman who works for the town...
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But that's only probably ten or twelve kilowatts.
Is it?
Yeah, it's small.
I want to make sure we're not putting anybody outside that realm.
Thirty's...
Thirty's reasonable?
That's three thousand, thirty kilowatts would be, right, like if it's roof mounted, it'd be three thousand square feet, roof mounted. And then even more so if it's ground mounted, because you need space between or percentage if you get around those. I just think it would be a nice parallel to the wind turbines that we have.
Well, we don't have any wind turbines.
We do. Well, but then we have a bylaw, and it's thirty kilowatts.
I had a business.
Bill, do we have, we have a...
We have a wind turbine bylaw.
What is it, thirty?
Thirty, thirty.
Does it need the other paperwork?
It's allowed by right.
Because I just don't want, you know, in neighborhoods where it's an accessory use to cover acres of land next to other people's houses. I mean, we should do what's reasonable.
So a cap, where you basically send anything above the cap, you'd have to come in for site plan?
For a special permit.
They would all, well, site plan will get triggered when site plan gets triggered. Okay, so if there's a change in use of five hundred square feet or more, or if there is, you know, creation of additional parking, or if there is land disturbance of at least ten percent of the lot area, it would be the three triggers for site plan review. So typically, a solar array would likely trigger site plan review.
We just don't, you know, for accessory use to a parcel, a house or something, it should not be the primary business of that property to make money.
You don't make money on them.
A hundred thousand kilowatts in power, you know.
No. So I'm good with a cap, so.
Yeah, well, thirty, just to define small, and then everything above that is large. That's all.
Yeah.
That's really a subtle change.
Does this apply to...
Your house.
Or house roof mounted panels, or are you talking about...
They can do ground or do either.
Combination of both or whatever.
Both, yeah. But it's a number that will parallel well with our wind turbine kilowatt?
Yeah, seems like a good bylaw.
Otherwise, the bylaw's good.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, we're limited to what we can do.
And plus, they're limited with national grid.
Yeah.
What they can do, they can only do ten kilowatts in a single phase, so.
Yeah, single line feed.
Gives us some negotiation.
Right. So are we just as, I mean, I know we're just, I don't, I'm not an expert at this, but we're trying to develop this bylaw for adoption, right?
Yeah, that's what I, something in place, just so, so thirty...
Thirty kilowatt, we okay with that? As a small, anything under that, small?
So with regard to Webster's, which is in your packet, do you have any specific input or direction? Because we did talk about using this as a model. And so aside from Aaron's thirty as a defining level.
Can I ask you this? By chance, did you talk with anybody over here on Webster to see if there's anything they wish they would have added or deleted out of?
No, I just asked for a copy of the bylaw.
Could we add, ask that question? They have a town planner.
I mean, before we really, you know, because sometimes they might say, "Man, we wish we did this," or...
There's a little gap.
We wish we did thirty.
Yeah, you're thirty. I mean, I'm okay with the thirty with the wind.
Well, I do know the building commissioner is talking to the town of Charlton, and they do have some specific input with regard to, you know, fire hazards. As you know, these arrays go to like a capacitor or battery bank. And these have the potential to burn and burn for an extended period of time. I mean, in the order of a month. Okay, if they catch fire, they recommend don't do anything. During that time, there may be an opportunity for, you know, toxins to be released. So that's something that, you know, we're reaching out and, you know, I'll get some input on that from Charlton and see what they have to say. Maybe a standard set of additions for permits or something like that.
What does our own fire chief say?
Yeah, have we run this by the fire chief?
We have not yet. He just mentioned it late this afternoon to me.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, yeah, I feel, yeah, get some more information to count on that. And notify our fire chief and the boards that we know everybody lives by.
Right.
Because they all meet together anyways, all the small towns and all that, so they should be, you know, talk about what's going on with all that.
I don't think you can do anything.
So Bill, you're working on drafting a Douglas version of this from the...
Yeah, I wanted to get your feedback before I put the time in.
My question is, where does this thirty kilowatt?
Well, I mean, I'm looking at numbers, they're like two hundred and fifty. Yeah, that's, that would cover almost three quarters of an acre of land in somebody's house. I mean, that's not what that is probably intended to be, but I know what the conversion is of today's panels. And if they do change, they're going to change it percentages probably over time. One kilowatt equals a hundred square feet on a roof mounted. So if you take it from there, three thousand square feet would be roughly thirty kilowatt. And three thousand square foot roof would mean a three thousand square foot house, all on the south side. So it might be in a six thousand square foot house, you know, if it's roof mounted. So it's just, it's rational, I think, and also the fact it is in our bylaw for the wind turbine, thirty kilowatts. So, you know, it's parallel that maybe. Doesn't hurt. I mean, if they want more, they can come, you know.
It's not to say that they're not allowed.
Right, but just to try to trigger a certain...
Yeah, level threshold.
Right, and we don't want to be involved in everybody's business at all. And I think thirty is plenty of threshold, you know? Because most people are doing eight, ten, twelve, fourteen if they're on a main street for their house. Thirty is unbelievable. That's a lot of power. That's a lot of electricity.
When we get a final version, we will have a public hearing.
Anybody else on the board have any comments about it?
No. Good start.
Anybody in the audience have any, anything they want to add or just give information?
Well, our concerns are the larger scale. I think thirty kilowatt is perfectly fine.
Trying to think about that, yeah.
You know, we're located up on Oak Street where they're talking about putting in twenty-six acres of panels. So I kind of wanted to see what can be done about that.
Yeah, they're going to have a hearing. I don't believe they formally submitted it to the town yet.
Right.
So once they do, if you're within three hundred feet of the site, you'll get mailing.
Oh, absolutely.
Letting you know one.
Right, and be involved, yeah.
Oh, we are.
It's good for us.
And we've looked through some of these things. You know, I know Westboro has some a really detailed zoning bylaw on the solar. I don't know if you've reviewed that one, but they talk a little bit about setbacks and things like that, so.
Can you just give your name and address?
The Dory Howt, forty-one Oak Street.
Thank you.
Brian Lovak currently wrote, would that be retroactive as well for current projects that maybe were approved?
Nope, no, not retroactive.
It has to be a new project going forward after that pass.
Sometime technology is sort of before us catching up to it.
Like any state government. Federal government?
Anything else you want to take out of audio, or you want to go?
Nope. Maybe Lakeside.
Seattle residential over Lake District.
Yeah. So at the last meeting, I think we had two homework assignments. One, I thought Tracy was going to draft some edits for section two, three, five, I think, of the zoning bylaw. I haven't gotten anything. And the second is, the board wanted town council to draft an overlay bylaw.
Or adopt or use...
Something, yeah.
Yeah, they have something.
I thought they had like some...
They have drafts of...
Okay, so the first thing I want you to take a look at is an email from Matt in the packet.
That was Matt Wojcicki.
Matt Wojcicki. And that's just for information. And he did authorize that we move forward with town council on this. But wanted us to be mindful of when we ask town council to do things, you know, it should go through the selectmen.
Right, right.
And that's number one. Number two, town council did not draft a bylaw. They put together a bulleted list...
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
Of items that they would like feedback on from the board. So if you take a look at that, we can certainly...
Ah, that's interesting. More than twenty-five percent of existing alleys.
We can provide feedback to them and direction. I also did share this with the building commissioner, and he had some additions to what is listed in this bulleted list, so I'd offer that to the board for consideration.
Do you want to offer that now?
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do.
I don't know, you had to pause it.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So where it says may not exceed thirty-five feet in height or present height of building, whichever is greater, he suggests substituting thirty-five feet with two and a half stories.
Yeah, that's, that's what our reds say.
Why is that?
Yeah, why not just do the thirty-five?
Because actually that...
That would be three and a half stories.
Correct.
And we don't allow that.
Or thirty-five or two and a half, whichever is less.
He read the bylaw.
He read this and asked for that substitution.
Because we only, we don't allow anything that big to be built anyplace else in town, so.
Oh, we don't have, we're thirty-five and eight. I'm sorry.
Yeah. We have a matrix, right?
What do you mean a matrix?
Well, we have a, we have a matrix in our...
Dimensional table.
Dimensional table.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would kind of help for us to draw this out with that. But I think it is two and a half stories.
Yeah.
To your point.
All right.
I think it is in the matrix that way. So the problem is when you use the matrices and stuff like that to explain it.
Does it define what the half is in our bylaw? Because different towns have different... No, like a good, you can have habitable space, and it defines, a building code will say what you can have. But does that mean less than half of the footprint of the roof? Like you can have living space up in there.
Sure, you can have living space up in there, but I think it's not, it's not a full lot lot, but it's not a full height.
We can certainly invite Mark to one of our meetings if we...
No.
Well, I mean, I can speak to it.
These are his recommendations.
No, no, no.
So go ahead.
Two and a half stories?
Okay. So he wanted to add an additional requirement for lot coverage...
Yeah.
On a percentage basis.
Yes.
He suggested we ask Jay what's a reasonable number. Okay. He wanted to include decks and stairs in that calculation.
Lot boats, anything.
Oh, oh, part of the...
In the lot coverage, yeah.
Lot coverage.
That makes sense.
But not any patios or anything that are under forty-two inches in height or under twenty-four inches or something like that?
Oh, no, taking up the whole lot.
No, but somebody could have a raise. This is Wellesley, this is Brookline. They get into this thing about different patio height. Someone raises a patio four feet off the ground, is that not included, or is that included, and what is the height that makes that included? So those are just...
Might be a question for Mark if he comes.
That'd be an addition. If he uses it off the ground, it's going to be, that's not a patio anymore.
But you define whether it's twelve inches or fourteen, you know, some definition.
For our field study.
Well, talk about Brookline and Wellesley. I mean, they're just, whoo.
Oh, yeah. Isn't Brookline all on electric now?
So Brookline does floor to area ratio.
He wanted to, on that third bullet, by right expansion of pre-existing non-conforming single and two-family houses, he wanted to make sure that we elaborated on that and made it just crystal clear that this does not apply to new construction.
Well, I don't think, I don't think we're doing two fam- two family.
That's Jay. Jay put that...
Let's take that out. I mean, the fifteen feet, I was definitely not in favor of eight or something like that, but fifteen is not too punitive generally.
Oh, on the...
Setbacks, side and rear.
Side and rear?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think fifteen's reasonable.
I think fifteen's good, if anything.
I mean, because I think the ZBA's gone, tried to stay, the ZBA would be, has gone to ten is the minimum that they approved prior, but that would give them appeal.
Beyond that.
Yeah, fifteen's reasonable, I think. And twenty-five on the front?
Or whichever is less, if there's a pre-existing.
Pre-existing, which is, yeah, which is good.
It's written down, a front setback or existing setback, whichever.
No, this does not address any bullet points on conservation, well, I mean, border health issues such as tight tanks.
I did raise that in my email to him, but he did not.
Okay.
He did, we did have a brief conversation about that, and he suggested that, you know, border health issues will take care of themselves. That's the border health jurisdiction.
Nothing to do with us.
Nothing to do with us.
All right.
He advised against actually including.
Yeah, okay.
This list of bullets here, is that what we currently...
No, this is what's being proposed.
Well, they're listed here, Lakeside Residential over Lake District. Okay, so is that already...
We don't have.
Been looked at, or is this what, all those bullets should be added?
Jay wanted to set the framework as to what he was going to draft. So this is the first step in what he wants to, no, he wants input from the board as to what they, what, you know...
Bullet points that need to be addressed.
What menu items they want in, in the bylaw.
Don't we want to add that absolutely no existing lots shall be subdivided less than whatever the...
Fifty feet.
The current, no, no subdivision.
Oh, oh.
Below current zoning.
Below the current zoning, the two acre.
Correct.
But I think we should reiterate that in here somewhere, if we're going to at all entertain this.
Yeah, no, that was one of our key things. We didn't want it. Yeah.
This is only for, this is only for...
Relief.
For structures that are already in existence. You can't create a lot.
No.
Well, yeah, you're not going to, you're not going to, you're not going to take a two acre lot and chop it up into a bunch of five thousand.
No.
That was not the purpose of this.
No.
So, to your point.
And things that you would add, just it applies only to existing lots, not just say two lots, just because it's...
So how's this sound? No subdivision of existing property beyond what is allowable under the underlying zoning district.
Yeah.
Right.
It's subdividing, yep. All right. What's, your, the last bullet? May build or replace a single non-habitable accessory structure by right. Okay.
You're saying that if something burns down or something, or, you know, you can do it by right?
Yeah.
Because this whole thing would be right on the overlay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep. The twenty-five, I figured, huh? I think the only difference is from what we were initially looking at with a little chart, and if you want, I could send you that chart to Jay or whatever, was I think the only difference was we were talking maybe ten feet on the sides versus fifteen, which I think fifteen's reasonable.
Yeah, it's a bonus service, right?
Yeah, it's because of, I've gone to a couple of ZBA board meetings, and they've always said, hey, ten feet's the max of like what they would grant a variance.
This is for accessory structures. I read it wrong.
Yeah.
Where you said may build or replace a single non-habitable accessory structure, like a shed.
Yeah.
By right, within above setback, no greater than twelve feet of mean roof height, and no greater than one hundred and twenty square feet, ten by twelve.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah, obviously if something is protected, if it burns down, you get, you get the backup anyway, so.
What's it say about this? Applies to only lots, please. So what do you do about, so this says, applies to only lots that have at least fifty feet of frontage for five thousand fifty. So you've got...
Well, some people have forty-foot lots.
No, 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 but you've got like Island Road in Northwest Maine that are, have frontage on the right of way and have frontage on the body of water.
It's, the water's not considered frontage.
No, but they're on the right of way. No, but they're on the right of, but they're on the right of way, so they're not frontaged on the street.
Yeah, it's pre-existing non-conforming.
Pre-existing, okay, okay.
Can't create anything else on there.
There, no. But if somebody has a forty-nine foot frontage, it doesn't.
No, I'm thinking like, like, like Island Road, I think, it's not colored in that map, but Island Road was the ones that was like, um, that in North, Northwest Maine. Some of Bar's property and down there by Steve and all those guys, that's all on our right of way, even though the addresses are, uh, Northwest Maine.
Yeah, but that, that sounded like a goat, goat path.
Yeah.
Is that considered a right of way?
Considered right of way, it's not part of the, the main road.
Cause they're way, way far away from the main road.
No, 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 Northwest Maine. Northwest Maine, across the bridge.
Across the dam.
Across the dam.
Maybe a right of way, but it doesn't, it doesn't meet any of the standards for road construction if you want to start building on it.
No, 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 agree, agree. Yep.
So we also.
You'd have to do huge road improvements.
No, no, agree.
We're also talking about private ways, too.
Yeah, they're private ways, yeah.
Yeah.
But, I don't know, I mean, I don't even know if it's, you know, I guess it's a private way, I'm not sure if it's just a.
So, we're not going clear as to what road we're talking about.
Island Road, down where, um.
I know Island Road.
No, 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 Northwest Maine, right across the, the dam.
On the right hand side.
On the right sand side.
Yep.
There's six houses down there that are on this little car path.
They're on the water, the back side's on the water. That's, yeah, 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 that, yeah. And new houses being built.
Oh, I'm going the wrong way.
Yeah. He's on the, Bill's on the causeway.
I'm going to West Street.
Bill's on the causeway.
I'm going to West.
By Charlie Church.
Yeah.
I'm actually going towards Douglas Hill Way.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so, so would we add?
Yeah, there's a right of way there and I think back in the day, they claimed frontage on the right of way.
So, so, yeah, so, so do we, do we say?
Existing.
At least fifty feet of frontage.
Anywhere. I mean, on a, on a, on a way.
On a way, yeah, yeah, on a way, that's what I'm saying.
But not on the body of water.
Okay. I'm just saying.
Oh, I see, so yeah, clarify that.
Yeah, clarify that, on a way.
Yeah. So where's this here?
Way.
Second bullet.
Yep.
Yeah, that's why.
That's reasonable.
Because there's a few other ones that are like that.
Yep.
So on public right of way, public common right of way.
On a way.
On a way.
On a way, that's it, that covers everything.
On a way, yeah, on a way, because I'm just trying to think of, there's, there's a couple around the reservoir that have these little.
Yep. Do dads. Do dads.
So guys, you, that, folks, and just lot coverage is one of the most powerful limiting factors in density and, um, and, and intensity in a neighborhood. So if you have a five thousand square foot lot and you want it to build, and we don't have lot coverage, they could go fifteen feet, fifteen feet, twenty-five feet and cover the whole thing.
Yeah.
Aaron, do you know what a reasonable number is for lot coverage?
It's usually about thirty percent in that range.
What's, what's he, what was the name?
Now, but again, the bigger lots can handle bigger numbers, you know, so smaller lots need bigger.
Pretty septic will dictate.
Oh, yeah.
As, as well.
Well, right now, but like I said, you can't count on that. They could have a remote location for their septic, across the street, down the street, wherever.
Right, but I would.
So no more than, so what he's saying, so you, you wanna go to, instead of twenty-five percent, you wanna see thirty, no more than thirty percent of existing?
Yeah, because these, we're talking about small lots and they should get another five percent maybe, you know, because the lots are so small. You know, you don't wanna give a two thou, a two acre lot thirty percent, that means they could cover like, you don't even wanna get into it because it's not our business.
Right.
Well.
Yeah.
Warehouse is right.
What's, what's the footprint on, again, so if we take five thousand square feet and times that by thirty?
Thirty percent of five, fifteen hundred square feet.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred square feet.
How's my math?
Okay. No, no, I'm, I'm just trying to.
So that with a two-story house, that could give you a three thousand square foot house.
Which is, I think is plenty.
Right, so thirty percent's a good starting point.
Yeah, thirty percent, I think is reasonable.
Can we change twenty-five to thirty?
Yeah.
I mean, do you wanna be a little more conservative, go twenty-five, which means they can build less?
Well, do you find, do you find that the smaller lots warrant smaller?
Oh, no.
Lot coverage or larger?
Uh, larger, because if you're trying to give them some ability to increase, yeah, and, and, right, it would include sheds, it would include decks, it would include.
This is habitable. Square footage.
Oh, you know what?
No, but, no, but lot coverage should be based on decks.
You're not gonna go on habit, you're gonna go on.
Yeah, no, you know, his next bullet, you know, Mark's next bullet was decks and stairs included.
Should be included in lot coverage.
Yeah, all that's included.
Okay, okay. And, and patios, to be careful, I'm just saying, any raised patios over twelve inches high is at the grade.
Yep.
So say.
So we go to thirty because we're including the decks and the patios?
Correct.
Yeah, that seems reasonable.
Has that seemed reasonable?
Yeah.
Cause we're including the decks and the patios.
Okay, so we're making, putting some numbers in.
There you go.
So which, which twenty-five will be thirty?
Fourth bullet.
Bullet number four or bullet number?
Thirty, thirty percent and get rid of habitable square footage of ground, yeah, all, including decks.
Okay, that was a separate bullet point, okay, so that was from Jay. Total square footage may not be more than twenty-five percent of existing habitable square footage and Mark wanted to add.
Oh, good point, good point.
Okay.
Okay, two separate things.
Two separate things.
Keep that as twenty-five percent, so they cannot take their, are you saying?
He didn't cross that out, he wanted this in addition to.
Has fifteen hundred square feet, they cannot add at any given point a total of twenty-five percent habitable additional.
Correct.
Okay, that's fair.
Well, that's fair.
Right.
And then, and then we wanna add the other one about thirty percent.
Yeah, two different things, I'm sorry.
So this is correct, habitable.
Yeah, that's correct, so.
Okay.
And, but, but you gotta add lot coverage here at thirty percent.
Okay, lot coverage.
Which includes the decks.
Yeah. Okay.
That's a good, good point. Yes.
Ryan? On number four.
Yeah.
So that says twenty-five percent of existing habitable square footage, is that?
May not be enough, actually.
Square footage, like, what if somebody wanted to go up? It's a single story, but they couldn't increase their footprint, but they wanted to go up, now they're doubling this, their.
Yeah, you know what, we could address this as ground level, twenty-five percent increase.
Ground level?
Good point.
Ground level, yeah, to your point, yeah, ground level.
Because I, I told my neighbor, he's got a little one-story thing and I said, go on, you can put a second floor, you got the right, keep your bedroom count the same.
Honestly, that's the only way people will make these calls.
Great point.
Well, very funny.
Right.
With the setbacks on this type of, let's see, any way they'll be able to clean them up and make them a little bit.
You know, I'll work on this too with Bill, so, good point, thank you.
Yeah, that's good.
Ground level expansion.
We're always trying to measure the footprint of, and that's why we were doing that calculation.
Not second floors. So we could put parentheses, not second floors to help define that a little bit.
Some bills.
So say that again, I'm sorry.
So it's the increase in total square footage may not be more than twenty-five, increase in total ground level, but ground level square footage expansion may not be more than twenty-five percent of the existing habitable square, habitable square footage, so they can take all their square footage and add twenty-five percent on the ground level, max. But we're not limiting them in the total above that ground level.
And then, and then you have the lot coverage of thirty percent of Jackson.
A point I'd like to make when I talk about grazing stuff.
Yes.
And you're talking about Lakeside Residential and stuff like that. You gotta think about the person who has the water view.
Hmm.
That's what he, that's why he bought whatever he bought, he's, he can see the lake, he can see the woods and all of a sudden the guy in front of him puts up a two and a half story house, now he's got nothing.
No, no, but that, but, but here's the thing, the guy in front who bought, who, who's paying taxes on the waterfront, he has the waterfront. He has all right, no matter, no matter what we do here, he has all right to go up two stories.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just bringing up a point, I mean, I guess it's been a complaint in the past, it's happened to people.
No, no, but, but, but it, that's the difference between a water view this way and the guy in front having the right to do what he has to do. There, there's no way around that.
They can't absorb that, I don't think.
Yeah, you can't, you can't.
That's a good point.
No, no, it's a good point, but what happens is it forces him to go up two stories, so he still has his view as well, if he's on a hillside. There's, there's no way, there's no way around that.
This really sucks, in the sense that, that, that extra man are even worse.
Well, no, but that, that's why we've got a cap of how high.
Well, two and a half story.
It is what it is, so I think that's fair, um.
Should we cap the overall roof height? So say someone does a two and a half story, but, two and a half story, but say they put a twelve pitch roof and it's a wide house. That roof can climb up, should we be lowering, being lower than, should we say twenty-eight feet or thirty?
If Mark comes here, he can figure out what his.
Now you're starting to get into architectural stuff.
Yeah.
I'm twelve pitch, you're gonna tell me I can't put a twelve pitch anywhere else?
No, I was only responding to, to.
I'm just saying, well, I mean, the reason you go twelve pitch is you don't have any trouble.
Correct.
Now you're gonna make somebody go.
And you also get nice storage and everything else above there.
So that, that's.
And if you're on a lake, you definitely don't have basements for the most part.
Do you want to send that dimensional chart?
I'm just trying to say.
Or start.
Take what pitch roof you're gonna run.
I wanted to throw it out.
I think it's time to get a little bit.
Taking the.
I think there is a overall height thing in the town.
Do we have an overall height?
I think it's correct, I just wanted a table.
Yeah, let Jay do that.
Okay.
We'll look at it then.
Okay. You had thirty-five feet in here, we don't want thirty-five feet, it's twenty-five.
I thought there's a building code in this town where there is a maximum overall height to the roof.
It's a dimensional table.
Yeah, two and a half stories.
Okay.
But, but no, not just two and a half stories, is there a number?
Twenty-five.
A median?
There is.
What is it?
Twenty-five.
No, it's thirty-five, I think.
Thirty-five.
It's thirty-five or two and a half stories, whichever is minimal.
Right, cause some guy could put a ten foot first floor, nine foot second floor, put up a roof and all of a sudden you got a forty-two foot.
Ernie, in our dimensional tables, it says two and a half stories.
Yeah, okay.
But when you go to ZBA or PLs, it's thirty-five feet.
Okay, I know Mark has a specific number for it.
You are.
Correct, it's thirty-five.
Should, should this reference?
I think we, but, but we would be more aligned.
That's all building code.
We'd be more aligned with the two and a half stories.
Well, not building code.
Fits into what we're currently.
It's what we have in our zoning.
Yeah, alright.
Right, but when, when people read this, should we not be respectful to the current zoning and just say, none of this, um, you know.
Surpasses.
Surpasses, you know, if not mentioned here, anything that's current in the dimensional.
He's coming down in the, uh.
Well, that's the underlaying zoning.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, so maybe a sentence to that effect.
Just referring back to it.
If it's not listed here, then the underlaying zoning.
Correct, controls, under section, blah, 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 blah. That way, you know, people don't go this, ha, ha, look at this town, blah, 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 we can do anything we want, you know, no, we have an underlaying.
Oh, right, and I agree.
Okay.
Explain twelve pitch.
It's a certain angle, right?
Forty-five.
What is it, okay, why does, why does?
Twelve inches in.
Twelve inches over, twelve inches up, twelve.
So ten pitches.
What's the difference then, regular pitch?
Ten pitches, twelve inches, ten inches. Or six pitch, but they just call it, that's just what they call it.
In, in the, yeah.
Ten pitch, eight pitch.
You guys are on a lot. In and in, you know what's the best? Perfect pitch.
Only, only if you wanna say something.
So, Bill, do you want our inputs by Wednesday next week or something like that?
Oh, no, I'm taking it now. I'm gonna put this pretty much wrapping.
Well, Bill and I will, can we tweak together, I mean, do your thing and then we'll take a look, maybe.
I mean, as soon as it comes in, I can email it to you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then.
Yeah, no, but I think this is really in line.
Ryan, you have another question?
Uh, just on that last one, for clarification, on may build or replace a single non-habitable accessory structure by right within above setback, no greater than twelve feet, so does that mean you can build a shed a hundred and twenty square feet outside of, or to the outside edge?
Replace.
Well, it says build or replace.
But, but, but that, that is true of the current zoning too.
I'm, I'm just asking for clarification, does that mean like you could put it outside of the fifteen and the twenty-five?
It's within the new.
Or does it still have to be?
It's within the new building, building envelope.
Yeah.
Okay, so that size structure is allowable by right whether you're in this district or not in this district.
Same for clarity though, maybe we should, to say that it should not exceed the fifteen, you know, the, the, what's the recommended here? Should not exceed fifteen, fifteen, twenty-five.
I, I have to go with what Jay kinda covered.
Your property line.
The, I, I, I think.
It's good.
I think it's good enough with what Jay put in there.
In above setback.
Or Matt, did Matt work on that?
That's the fifteen, fifteen, twenty-five.
Whether it's in this district or not.
I think at the end of the day, he's, um.
Establishes this distance.
Why did he say?
And then why are we doing anything?
But he's gonna, but he's, he's. You said he's gonna modify.
Yeah, yeah, no, Jay, Jay's just kinda changing the language.
But.
Based on this discussion, so he's.
Can he email it out to us?
That used to be the number they used for non-permit instructor or whatever, now it's two hundred, so should that number be?
Two hundred?
No, it's one twenty.
The point is taken up, should it be a little bigger than one twenty for a shed, ten by twelve is kinda small.
Let, let, let us go into.
I'm like ninety-five percent, Bill, that is two hundred now.
I'm pretty sure it's one twenty.
Yeah, whatever, let, let Mark weigh in on that.
He didn't comment on that, he, he reviewed it.
On the shed stuff, and it could've changed, I was told in the past, that's what the state recommends. I was told in the past, that's what the state recommends. The town can require a permit for anything.
Yeah.
And then Douglas, I know I put up a shed, smaller, I had to pull a permit.
Yeah.
That was under a different department head.
Okay, I'm just saying, at, at one time it was done that way. So if it's changing here and there, but at one time, it didn't matter if you had it eight by eight, you had to pull a permit.
Yeah.
Jeremy, did you have?
This from what I understand, that I deal with a lot of building issues, but.
Yeah.
I'll ask Mark.
I was told it was changed to two-hundred and you technically don't need a permit as long as you meet the zoning requirement.
Right.
But we're pretty sure not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so.
I'm pretty sure it's not, but.
But I'll check with Mark.
Yeah, I don't think so, but I will check. Jeremy, did you have?
It is a hundred and one, Bill's right.
Okay.
And, uh, just on, when it comes to the actual height, when we say two-and-a-half stories, designing houses to rope central mass, it varies from town to town. Some building officials go by the mid-level of the roof. Other officials go by, let's say there's a walkout basement, it's, it's a cape, and you have a full shed dormer off the back. And now it, two-and-a-half stories becomes three stories. So some building officials go by the top, the upper gutter.
It's the ridge generally.
Right, and some people go by the ridge. It, it varies from town to town. I'm just saying, it, it does vary. And it's based on the, the size of the, or the, the height of the fire apparatus that the fire department can actually get.
Right.
And, I mean, once again, sometimes a fire truck can't get around to the back of a walkout basement. So they'll be fighting the fire from the, from the front of the house, which doesn't have a walkout basement.
They may not be able to get back.
It does vary, um, it's, it's vague. Be quite frank, can you say two-and-a-half stories? Because what happens if you get a, a full walkout basement in the back?
Is that counted or not counted?
Now you're in three stories.
Three and a half stories, yeah.
In reality, are you?
So, so Jeremy, that's why I'm in favor of both the two-and-a-half plus a limit on the ridge.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
To the median grade, which is the average grade entirely around. And I've had to validate that multiple times.
Right, and, and sometimes the, the fire department, well, they, they say it's only halfway up the roof line, regardless of the pitch.
Right, right.
Some people, well, some building officials go to the top gutter.
Right, he's absolutely right, and it's like the ridge.
We think it should be addressed in our zoning, we can certainly.
It varies from town to town.
You know, a lot of these places are gonna have walkout. You know, the majority of them will have walkout basements because of the grade going down the lakes. So do you, do you count that side or don't?
No, but it's part of your median grade.
Yeah.
You have to add it in.
I don't think our zoning bylaws says median.
Right, well, I'm just saying, this is something that we need to.
We could address it here without changing the other bylaws.
That is true.
Remember, there could be a high water table and now you're four feet out of the ground.
What? Think we should have it.
I would, I'd see what Mark, no, no, but I would see what Mark's take is on measurements for walkouts.
I mean, I mean, I haven't worked in every town.
There's no standard, to be honest with you. It's different from town to town.
Right, exactly.
And it, 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 there's no consistency.
Yeah.
Usually what they do is they, what I found was more consistent was they go halfway up the, the roof.
Right, to be measured from the.
My, my take is just a little more restrict, it's usually, usually it's ridge that I've seen. Whatever, my, whatever, median grade, median, the average grade. So if you're a walkout, that's punitive to you to make sure that you're not creating.
Probably greater than.
Yeah, I mean, you know, personally, I have a second story, I have notes, two-and-a-half, because I got a walkout. And I look from the second floor, I'm forty feet off the ground almost, you know, it's like, you gotta be careful about that, yeah.
So you're forty feet from?
No, I'm not forty, but it's probably thirty, it's probably thirty-five.
David, think of that.
Alright, well, this is, this is a really good start.
And you could have a tri-level with a walkout basement. Now it even, it's.
You'd be forty if you're not worried by it, right?
You know what I'm saying?
Aaron, you want to email me some language?
Yeah, I'll do that, yeah. I'll take it right out of another bylaw, so.
Alright, so we'll have Mark come in, Bill, if you can.
Okay.
Concerned with address.
Or do we have any questions for Mark, or does he? I think, because I think we're gonna, we're okay with everything he's recommended.
Mm-hmm. Just on the height, how it's gonna be handled.
Yeah. I think that's in general with any town, right, in any structure, any area.
Well, I'm just saying, are we gonna count the basement, or?
I, I think, I think you should, as a median.
I, I, no, I think, I think we're at the point where.
Right.
You're looking at the slope of the land and stuff like that.
Right, right.
It's not, it's not living.
Once you get a walkout, if you've got glass on the back, all of a sudden you've got another full floor.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Cool.
Alright, and this is not, although I was.
Which will show it.
Okay, what's next?
Yeah, right, thanks, guys.
Long way in, what we got there? Anything else you want to go to Bill for us?
Nope, nope, I think that got everybody.
Yep, okay, McIntyre Loom.
Okay, um, yeah, in your packet, um, you'll see an email from John McInt, uh, John Palmer from McIntyre. Um, he did try to drop off a set of drawings today. Um, I took a quick look at them, it was missing some prominent features like a survey stamp, um, horizontal limit of the permit area. So there were some basic things that were not on the plan. So I said, "Look, we can do this formally, I could review it, write you a letter, and then go through this process, or you can take it back, I'll give you a short written list," and that's what we did, so.
So, you're like, meaning he's, he's moving forward?
He's looking at the next meeting, yeah.
That's all.
Now, that's good with the board?
Yeah.
Was it, was that the only one, was McIntyre?
Number one, McIntyre Loom.
No, we got three of them.
Okay.
They're written in order.
Hey, Upton Site.
Okay, Upton Site, you have an email from Bruce Haskell, um, the consultant for, uh, Upton Site, and, so I'll take a minute to read that. They are continuing to fill the site.
Okay.
Um, so they're not, currently they're not in the, um, restoration mode, they're continuing to fill in accordance with the original permit.
Okay, great. So what's the material that they're bringing in?
It's, I don't want to say contaminated soil, but it's, um, it's regulated soil, how about that?
Regulated soil.
It's called, it's called liquid fill.
Liquid fill.
Reg, regulated soil, that's, that's mixed with onsite, um, flowable fill.
Okay.
Um, to establish the grades that were approved.
Okay. What's their long-term plan to do?
Bring it up, level up the lot.
Yeah.
The, the, the initial premise was to level it off so that it'd be suitable for industrial development.
Okay.
Because right now it's a big hole, they can't do that.
No, no, and, and.
It's a big bowl.
No, yeah, and they've been doing work from, so it must have been a formal gravel pit back in the day.
It was.
Was that gravel pit?
Kaia.
Kaia? Well, that's before my time.
Kaia.
Never heard of them.
Yep.
Jerry Kaia.
Wow, yeah. And we had a lot of problems.
It's in a big hole.
Sleepy Hollow.
Okay.
Sleepy Hollow. Sleepy Hollow.
Happy New Year, Bill.
Yeah, very short and sweet email from Jim in your packet. Um, he did put a call in to me today, I didn't have an opportunity to call him back, so I owe, owe Jim a call back. That would have been the first of this week.
Okay.
Which email? Wish us a happy belated happy new year.
Oh, wow. That was a good one. Um, so we're looking at, what, two-eleven, maybe get them on agenda?
Yeah, you know, I'll call him back tomorrow, I'll see what he's doing, progress.
That's good.
That sounds good.
Alright.
So that, for the record, that's the third time I've reached out to him, um, regarding these ASBILs.
Jeremy.
Yeah, I'm a little disappointed, um, it's been at least nine months and this guy is, you've asked for these ASBILs.
I know.
Um, you've extended his permit multiple times. What is this big, this is, how should I put it? It, it's very unsightly in my neighborhood, right? We were sure that this wasn't gonna affect everybody's property values. Now, as you know, Andy Smith sold his house, he went to a nurse at home, he lost sixty thousand dollars because of this, this big old hole that's, that's there. I, I, I'm not getting a warm fuzzy feeling that anything's gonna happen. This guy has basically flipped your finger now for nine months, or maybe even close to a year, and nothing's going on. It's dead. I don't even know, has the, has the fire, the fire pipe gone over the stream?
Has the what gone over?
The fire pipe. He was gonna loop it to Route sixteen.
The water line.
What, there's a water line into the site?
I know.
I don't, I don't believe.
They haven't done any looping yet.
I don't believe they crossed it. I could be wrong, Jeremy, I'd have to check with Steve on that.
I don't believe they have.
I'm just a little disappointed on this board, on, on, and the inaction of this particular gentleman on getting this thing accomplished or finished, or, um, it, it looks like a, um, a desert out there. Every time we have a windstorm, the whole neighborhood gets loaded with dust, he doesn't have any dust control, um, and there is no action. So you guys keep extending your permit and the people of this neighborhood have to live with this mess and all this dust every guy, every day until something happens.
He's not wrong.
I mean, at the least, you figure he's got a big pile of lume in the center, he could spread the lume around. Bill said it's already to the point where he can't take any more sand out of there. So why doesn't he just plant grass, spread the lume, and walk away then?
Certainly, we will ask him that question.
Yeah, I think, I think the, you know, reasonable question also is like, what's the plan for tying in the water line?
Right.
Because I think.
Right.
Well, you can't tie in the water line because he can't cross it because they're supposed to do it when it's a drought, and the stream never dries out. And he wants the trench to drain, and it's cold water for him.
Just ask him, see his plan.
Yeah, well, uh, both wills.
Trenching that, that, that stream is gonna, I know it's a conservation issue, but that's gonna wreck the cold water fishery. He should directional drill it. He shouldn't be trenching that thing. He's gonna kill every brook trout. And we have division of fisheries in Wilda go up there, they shocked it, and we counted, uh, it was a hundred-and-twenty native brown trout that are in that, that.
Oh, yeah, I've seen them in there. So, I mean, that's, that's, that's the conservation issue more than.
Alright, we'll see it.
Yep.
Can I ask a question? With, this was a proposed development, right? I mean, I'm.
We had two permit applications, one was for earth removal, another was for a subdivision.
So is.
Years ago.
What, yeah, years ago, I mean, so what, is it more about the earth removal than it is about a subdivision? I mean, is that really what it?
You can remove the earth first.
No, I understand that, but this has been going on.
The real answer, Aaron, I think there's a difference of opinion on our regulations and statutory, abilities to excavate further. And I think their team are looking at that, okay?
But why don't they just basically cap it, like Jeremy's saying, is that?
I can't answer that.
Get this thing cleaned up.
We have surety, they currently have an existing permit. We granted an extension for a year, so they're currently, they're, they're good.
I'm just talking about the fact.
They're, they're accessing.
They're accessing, you know, opportunities, what they want to do with the land. And, and it's their options, and they're the landowner, they're, they're within all their legal rights.
Now, now, the only issue is, again, as I pointed out, I did, you know, we, we spoke about this back in November, December, I want to say, um, where we talked about, um, getting an ASBIL plan.
Right, yeah.
And, and so, you know, there were three occasions that I, I did reach out and say, "Hey."
This is months and months ago, yeah.
So I think, I think, I think we have, next meeting, we should see an ASBIL.
And then we'll have to go for that.
Or even if it's a preliminary ASBIL, we should need an ASBIL.
But he's coming in with an ASBIL next meeting, is that correct?
I didn't say that. I shared the email response I got.
Okay, so.
Now, just because it's designed for a housing development doesn't mean that it's gonna be that. We've had other developments and then.
Maybe just walk away.
Well, put it in solifarm.
And frankly, that, that's why we have two separate applications, one for the earth removal, one for that. We can't expect that they're gonna follow through, maybe the market tanks, you know, whatever the case is. So, so we just get that earth removal plan that doesn't show any roads or buildings or anything.
Yeah, but he is, every time he extends, comes in here and extends, uh, goes to the stage two or stage three, however.
Phase three currently, yeah.
And he starts, he's got areas there that were supposed to be re-vegetated years ago.
Well, well, interestingly, Mike, phase three encompasses some of phase one and phase two. The areas that were on the periphery have been restored, okay? So there are portions that have been restored.
I've been up there.
Yeah, I, I've driven by that area and stuff like that.
Yeah, I do all the time, and it's minimal, especially this time of year, you can't tell. Well, what they put down there was pretty minimal.
But, but, but it once was, it is what it is. It once was a woods, right? And now you drive by it and it looks like a hole, and it looks like desert, you know? And so it's all on the backs of aesthetics of the town.
It'd be great, no, it'd be great if he comes to our next meeting and provides us an update and, and an ASBIL or.
You know, we're, we're frustrated too.
No.
You can get that, right? I know, I know.
Here's your, here's your open sand pit. Everybody around this, this whole neighborhood, you got McIntyre, you got Pride, they're tearing apart the, the whole, my whole area town. And nobody wants to reclaim anything, nobody wants to plant anything. And you say, "Yeah, there are some portions that have been, that have been wounded and seeded, but, alright, it's not, it's meadow mix, and if it's twenty percent of the whole property, you're lucky."
Correct, I don't disagree with that.
Yeah.
You know, we can get about twenty.
And you say phase three, he can't do phase three because he gotta cut, he can't cut within a hundred feet of all the property to your butters, unless the butter agrees to it.
What about if we give him a cover crop free from the state? He can just throw in there, in a matter of two months, you're gonna have, you know, hayfield and whatever growing, you know? You know?
Yeah, see if you can get them in.
It would help the dust problem.
Would you like me to invite?
Yeah, would.
Preferably with an ASBIL.
He don't care, he don't care about the dust.
It's Jim, we're dealing with Jim.
Yeah, so, so I think, I think we're just gonna ask him.
I think we're gonna ask him.
Jeremy, come back.
Ask him again about the ASBIL.
Come back.
And ask him again to come in and, and let us know.
Yeah, with the ASBIL.
With the ASBILs.
Okay.
Plenty of time.
Okay.
Plenty of runway.
Is that water line required as part of the?
Development.
Plan?
That's the subdivision.
That's the subdivision.
So, so the way we work it usually is the water and sewer department oversees the construction of that, that's why I can't answer.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, it's his subdivision, every single, they're all duplexes and they all have their own individual septic tanks. He's right up the hill from Chow Street and sewer department. Why can't he put a, a sewer line?
Popping, popping up.
No, no, you don't have to pop it up, it's gravity fed.
Well, why didn't you have a sewer line?
I mean, you don't, you don't have to be a genius to see that that would definitely be a prime example for gravity fed.
So, so, so again, there, there's another subdivision that's up the street from that, which is the Williams Drive, as well as a bunch of other ones. If the, you know, let's be fair.
Those are all duplexes.
Correct, but if the town had incentive for something to go in that direction, it's all gravity fed, it would, I mean, so.
So what, what, what's the?
Well, no, they, they have a series of grinder pumps on Charles Street currently because there's, obviously there's a stream crossing at the intersection of Northeast Main.
Yeah, but it coming down.
Is at a low point.
That's not, this is not, it's not a gravity fed system on Charles Street.
No, no, not on Charles Street, but from.
Well, I mean, that's.
So tying that all in.
That's not, that's not, that's the water and sewer department.
That is water and sewer, actually, we did have a conversation.
You're letting them cut a domestic fire pipe across the stream up the street, and you won't let them put a sewer line on Charles Street?
That's not, that's not.
No, 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 we, we did discuss this during the, the subdivision construction.
Yeah.
I was advocating for a pump station.
Yep.
Um, they requested to just do onsite septic.
Right.
We had that conversation.
Yeah, and we can't force them.
Because of the soil type.
That's why. Yeah, because they had a great septic soil.
Yeah, it's great soil.
Alright, let's get them in next week and you guys come back, because we, that's good.
And, and, yeah, the water line.
Alright, so invite them in, Bill, and we see, we see where.
Yeah, let's try to.
Alright. Alright, uh, Town Council billable hours.
I'm not, I'm not bad with this, Bill.
Thank you, Jeremy.
This is like thirty-three thousand dollars.
Bill, is this, again, Jay just charges?
It's like thirty-three thousand.
For all years worth, though. Yeah, I, I don't know why we have, I mean, I, I don't.
Why do I even want to see this?
That's the code.
Who wanted to see it?
No, why do you want to see the cost?
I don't, I didn't, Tracy wanted it.
Tracy?
I, I couldn't, I, I could feel.
No, but, um.
It's not our concern.
She wants to know what, thirty-eight, five, three, four.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll ask Mark.
I mean, I, no.
So, so.
I'm just saying.
No inconsistent group.
Bill, Bill, my only question is.
Yeah, thank you.
So it's, we just pay a flat monthly rate?
Twenty-five hundred or something.
Twenty-five hundred bucks?
Yeah, they're on retainer.
Okay, I just wasn't sure, so.
What we have to remember, we can't, you can't, individuals on this board can't call Town Council, that's what they do something.
Right, right.
It has to go, we have to vote on it here, it has to go to Bill. Bill brings it to the selectmen, that's how the process works.
Well, on, on, yeah, on, on article or something like that, but you, you call them or email them about items and stuff like that.
That's part of their scope, yeah.
Part of their scope.
So, we don't, we don't do that as.
So when we ask them to do something beyond scope, like draft a bylaw?
Yeah, add a number.
That, that needs to go down the hall.
It has to go to, that has to go to.
And I think that was mainly because Adam was here and was like, "Oh, I've, he's covered a lot of the bridge," you know what I mean? Did, did he write up that article? Was that Adam?
Yeah.
Right, I just kinda added up each thing.
The zoning artist, or was that Jay or Adam?
Jay did.
Okay, because Adam, Adam was.
The motion was made for Adam, I made that clear to everybody.
I'm, I'm wrong, so I guarantee you.
No, but I thought Adam had the, he expressed their expertise on it.
All right, let's keep going.
Okay.
I can't answer that.
All right, all different, billable hours, huh?
We have, if we have questions for Town Councils.
See, Bill.
Goes to Bill or to the selectmen.
There wasn't a bond.
Okay, bonds, there we go, what are we doing with these bonds? Do we have any roads for public?
This is, this is all public record anyway, so anybody can ask for it. I don't, I don't know why Tracy wanted a copy, she asked for it, so we all.
The bounds, not the bonds, the bounds.
Oh, these are bounds?
Just to be clear on how we, how we deal with Town Councils.
Yeah, moving on, moving on.
We bring it up in our meeting, we vote on it, it goes to Bill, and Bill presents it to the selectmen and they decide.
Let's just ignore it.
Yeah, we're moving forward, do, do we have any roads that are coming up for public acceptance?
Douglas subdivision, bonds.
Bounds.
Bounds. I'm sorry, bounds.
So, the list I compiled there, when there was still snow on the ground, I'm not sure, so sure it's out there now, but the, the asterisk ones, you know, this, this was a list that I was kind of guessing might need bounds.
Yeah.
The ones with the asterisks are the ones I'm questioning whether or not they have them, they may have them, so I have to go out in the field and check. The ones without the asterisk, I'm pretty sure do not have bounds.
Without?
That's a lot.
That's a lot?
Yes, that's why we said each time we would like to do a couple.
Didn't we collect the money for this?
No, this, a lot of these.
Most of these are prior to my time here.
No, no, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not.
Year before we had it.
Take it easy, I'm just asking, like, didn't we collect money for these?
We've already, but we've talked about this before, that's why it was brought up, all these are from way, way back.
No, no, no.
Where it never got done, so we want to try.
Did we?
At each time there's a meeting, to get a few of them in, and keep rolling.
So didn't we just approve?
We just approved a bunch.
Shady Knolls.
No, no, no. Acceptance of a road. Did we do Darling Way?
We've done a bunch of them.
Like road acceptance, that's why I was.
Yeah, we, we've done Darling Way, we've done, most recently, we've done Brookside Estates.
But there was nothing on the bond?
Colonial Estates, Darling Way.
Was there any?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. You asked a question, let, let me finish. Bombard Overlook, Preservation Park, Shady Knolls Estates. Shady Knolls Estates Two, Spring Meadow, and Stonewall Court, those are all the most recent ones we accepted, primarily because we don't have bond money. No, I want to explain, so, we, we, we had, when these things came in over twenty years ago, the board, the board did not obtain adequate surety to finish the project in the event the developer went over. They also released all the building lots in the subdivision for building permits, so it was just an economical decision for these builders to say, it's gonna cost me more money to finish the project.
And walk away.
Then leave.
Then leave the ten thousand dollar bond that I have in there. So, so that's what all of these people did, and it's not surprising.
And these are all town-accepted public ways?
Yes.
Yeah, now they are, yeah. So I just wasn't sure.
I just want to ask one question. Showed on plan should be.
Yes, so, so the plan did not have bounds at every location it should.
Okay, got you.
So, some of these approved drawings showed the roadway, and it omitted bounds here and there, so, so I said, I'm gonna add a column that says there should be.
That's good, okay.
Now, the next question I have is, at present, on this list, how many bounds are there?
But he can't tell because of the snow, he just said it.
Yeah, that's what, that's why I put asterisk, I plan on going out there, but I think this is enough to give you a start on.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So the ones, the ones without asterisks, definitely, you know there are none.
Correct.
Correct, so.
The ones.
We agreed for the same amount of money as last time, we're assuming, do we need to get quotes again?
We will, we will.
But we need to pick some areas to do it, right?
I would say let's focus on one at a time.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're just chiseling away, I think we just talked about.
Do you start at the top, do you start at the bottom, or do you go a few on top, few on the bottom, and meet in the middle?
Well, well, from an economic perspective, if a land surveyor, if you're dividing these, a land surveyor will do one spot, do the research for one project, get in, get out, and then, then we're pretty much done, okay?
It's, it's also a disturbance.
So that's also an argument to, if, if we're thinking about doing a project entirely instead of piecemealing it, that's an argument to do project by project instead of, you know, half of a project and then a few years later the other half.
Where do these should be numbers come from?
Um, so, so, so the approved plans showed bound locations. Many of the plans, like, like Fairfax East is a good example, and if any of you know where that is, I'll be surprised.
I know where that is, that's the, that's the double horseshoe, double P, up on Birch.
That's right, so, those plans didn't show a single bound on them.
Of course not.
Okay? So, I went through and I counted up how many should be on there, that's a good example.
So, so a good point, you're saying to be economical, is try to pick a subdivision where you can do enough of the, to pick the ones where there's the least amount of bounds to get the most done for the least amount of money.
Yeah.
And then it comes off your list.
Right.
Now, let me ask you this, the last time, how many bounds were we able to achieve with?
I'd have to go look.
Twelve to fifteen.
Yeah, I personally think that number was low, the quote we got, but, but we got a quote, so it's valid. So I wouldn't count on that guy coming in, again, you might, maybe he does the first project and says, this is for the birds, I don't know.
So you might just do all of Fairfax East development at one point, because we could probably overshoot for that, but at least be done with all those streets, you say?
Well, no, because we have to allocate them.
But I would say let's focus on the ones without the asterisk until I confirm.
Yeah.
So let's do this, Darling Way, Darling Way and Brandywine Circle. All right, they have, should be eight and six.
Yes.
Take care of that.
That's pretty small, yeah.
Done and over.
Yep, good, good.
That, that way there, you're in the one area, we're kinda in the budget area from the last time.
So go next.
So we kinda know that it should cover, it should, basically cover that.
The only comment I have to that, Mike, is, it's off of Pound, Pond Street.
Yeah.
Pond Street doesn't have bounds, okay?
So.
Correct.
Okay, well, then, I understand, that's something.
Wow, Pond Street's big, huh?
That's thirty-eight of them, huh?
The, the other thing, Bill. A lot of turns on that road.
Well, let me ask you this, then on Pond Street, you say it should be, does it really need all thirty-eight?
I'll tell you, you know, from my perspective.
More the better, don't get me wrong, but in reality.
I think it does, that's my personal opinion, okay? You know.
That's what I'm asking.
But if it's one street, they might have a.
So, for example, if you're a surveyor, what you do is locate as many existing monuments as you can.
I know all about it, yeah.
So, if, and you work off of that, so, if, if we only put one here and then, you know, five hundred feet down there, put another one, that's okay, but I mean, if I'm surveying it, if I'm the guy out there in the field, you know what I'm doing? I'm digging at the one across the street, I'm digging at the one next down, I'm not gonna know it's five hundred feet away, you know what I mean? So, so there's time and expense with that, too.
What's, I got a question, though, what, what's gonna be, so when they go out and do, and go put the monuments out there, right? So we gotta notify those neighbors or something like that? Because, because I'm just worried about, like, you know, Aaron drives down the street and sees a survey truck, and then the guy's digging up his lawn to put a monument there, so I think we.
It's really not his lawn.
It would be within the right of way.
Correct, it, it's just awareness, like, like a mail or a notification of.
What, what I would say is that, you know.
Whoever we're.
We, we, that's right.
Knows, finds them.
That's right. There are statutory provisions that exempt land surveyors from trespass, they have the ability to go out there and, and do surveying.
Without notice to neighbors.
Oh, no, 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 I, I just, I just ran across this last week, where the guy didn't know where his boundary marker was, and it was actually my boundary marker, and it was actually my property that he's been mowing for the last fifteen years.
Why'd you tell him?
Well, no, because the surveyor went out there and scrubbed his lawn, scrubbed the lawn, and then, and he thought it was his lawn area, I'm like, that's the boundary marker.
Yeah, I have no idea where my boundaries are.
You don't have any, Mike, don't worry about it.
Your bounds?
But no, Bill, I, I think, I think, I think, agree with you with, about notification, I mean, because communication is the key here, when you're gonna go into an area, and I agree that we should focus in on one area at a time as we're moving through this, and we can build out a plan of, you know, here's our plan for two thousand twenty, here's our outlook for two thousand twenty-one, if we have the money, twenty-two, and we've got a plan moving forward.
And we've already started on Shady Knolls.
Yeah. And we, and we've also stopped, stopped more, you know, from being added to the list.
Now, with Shady Knoll, we threw quite a few of them in Shady Knoll, and I think we agreed the next one we'd do would be in another area, it's showing up.
We did talk about that, but, you know, as I'm thinking about this, maybe we do continue on Shady Knoll, just from cost perspective, I'm just looking at cost. You could probably get more monuments, because now we have existing monuments to work off.
And recently did show Shady Knoll first because of the gentleman who was having problems with his boundaries.
Who was right.
With his neighbor, so, I mean, unless we're addressed with another problem, right, continue with the same project and get it done.
Yeah.
Yeah, finish up. All right, good job.
Good to.
So how many more we got on Shady Knoll?
Right, so, let's.
Progress.
Did I deduct the ones that we had? No, no, I didn't, I didn't.
Well, just, you, you figure it out, you know what.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, cool. Mike, we're good.
Yeah.
So we have time to do a warrant article, and, you know, hopefully I'll get out there and confirm some of these, maybe some will drop off the list, right?
Do we have an article for this, for the spring?
I, I thought that was what you guys wanted.
Yeah, we already did.
Yeah, we did it.
Well, we had it in the fall, but now we'd like to go for it.
One in the spring, I think each time there's a meeting, we said we were gonna try to move forward, small increments, and keep it rolling. I, I know, the best way of doing it might be saying, hey, here's a couple hundred thousand dollars to do it, but we all know that's not gonna happen.
No, it's easier to.
So the best bet is, like this, pick an area.
You amortize it.
And hammer it out slowly, and just get it done.
Thank you, good job.